From the southeastern corner of western North Carolina, this is Polk Lore. I'm your host, James Hernition. This is the sixth and probably the last in a series of interviews with candidates for the Polk Schools Board of Education. Once again, if you haven't already listened to the first interview with Mike Ashworth, I really recommend you listen to at least the first few minutes as I supply an overview of the elections, which seats are up for grabs, and an explanation of why I'm interviewing some candidates and not others. In this episode, I talk with Sherri Page, who's been a member of the Board for Green Creek for 24 years. She's facing several challenges this year, including Brittany Klimstra, whom I interviewed a few episodes back. Sherri's a chief operating officer for the rug and home furniture and decor chain, and though she now spends a lot of her working days at their rally location, she found the time to talk with me the other day at the Green Creek Community Center, which used to be a school she knew well. Sherri Page, welcome to the podcast.
Thank you for having me, James.
As with everyone else, we start off by you explaining to me why you want to stick around on this school board because it hasn't always been the most pleasant of experiences in the last couple of years.
That's correct. It has been challenging, but I find that challenges will sometimes take you to a better and stronger level. I want to continue on the Board of Education, which I've served for 24 years now, because I still feel a love for my county that I grew up in and a love for all the children here in Polk County. And I just find great satisfaction in seeing the children grow and develop so they're successful as adults. I think that's what it's all about, James. I really feel it's giving back. And it's not always the thanks. I never have really entered this thinking about the thanks. It's about, it's more than that. It's about giving, and I find great satisfaction in that. I'm a product of Polk County schools. I grew up here all my life. I'm a Green Creek native. I attended Green Creek Elementary School, as well as my father, and as well as my son, my oldest son. He attended kindergarten here until they closed. And then it was, you know, it was consolidated, later a consolidated middle school, but we all shifted to Polk Central School. And I guess the reason I'm going there is that's what interest interested me to get onto the Board was I wanted to see a consolidated middle school. It was tough when two elementary schools closed here in the county. That would have been Mill Spring and Green Creek. And all of Polk Central was on one campus. It was K through eighth, a lot of ages on one campus. And when we built the Polk County Middle School, my youngest, he was able to attend Polk County Middle School, and that was great. I started out on the Board, like I said, 24 years ago. At that time, I had a four-year-old, an eight-year-old, and a 12-year-old. I no longer have children in the system, but I feel like I can still give. I have potential grandchildren that would be coming into the system, I feel like, in the future. And then I have relatives that are employees in the system. That's just, you know, why I do it.
24 years is a, is a long time to do almost anything, especially in a pseudo-political realm. I guess I'm just a little surprised that anybody would want to do something for that long, especially since if we compare, you know, this year, this election in 2022 to 24 years ago, I mean, was there even an election? Did you have to run?
This will be my seventh election, and I was unopposed in six, well, in five of them.
Okay.
So I've only had one opponent in the past, and this time, of course, I have opposition.
Yeah, there's more people running than I think anyone can remember.
Absolutely.
I guess. And we'll get to the motivations behind that. But let's move on to this thing I like to talk about, and that's the fact that school boards have a lot less power than people think. The state imposes a lot of parameters that you can't go above or below. So among those things that the school boards can control, what do you want to focus on on this next term if you're reelected?
I think, and I've learned this personally, I think we have to work on better communication with the public at large. I can understand, personally, this is just me speaking, not for the Board, that they sometimes do feel that it's just a one-way communication. And so I feel it would be good to maybe move away from being quite so formal to a little less formal. And as long as we can keep it civil and respectful, I'm for, you know, developing better communication with the public at large. Also, budget. Budget's going to be a major subject for us, a topic, because the SIR funds, which is the pandemic funds, will go away. And we were struggling as a system before with the budget, and then we did get the SIR funds, but then, you know, what's going to happen when those go away? So we're going to have to address that. I mean, that's real. And then also retaining, hiring, retaining employees. I find that in my business world, it's been really challenging since the pandemic to hire employees and to retain them. No one seems to really want to work anymore. I don't find that with our teachers, but I think they have to feel appreciated and they, you know, I want to buffer them from the noise out there, which can be political at times because you do have those out there creating noise. And I just want teachers to feel safe and appreciated, and we may have to think of some ways to attract teachers. We may have to increase salaries, or we may have to do, and this is just me speaking, we may have to do higher on bonuses. I don't know, but that's real. I mean, it's getting hard to find teachers. And also, transportation. Right now, our school bus system is hard to find drivers. We've upped their pay. I think it's currently around $15 an hour, but we're going to have to most likely move it on up soon because we cannot find anyone to drive, not when they're out there making $25 to $30 an hour driving a dump truck.
Well, this is true. When you point out that it's really hard for any business to find employees these days, I think more precisely, it's hard to find employees for what you can afford to pay them without pricing yourself out of the market. And for a school board, it's, you've only got a finite amount of taxpayers' dollars at your disposal, right?
Right.
And then we kept on getting calls from Superintendent Green this last week in Saluda. The bus is going to have to come an hour late or so because we just don't have the people to keep those bus drivers in their buses. We don't have the money for that. What can the school board do, though? I mean, for instance, this is something we talked about with some other candidates. You know, until recently, very recently, you didn't have a media resource person because really didn't have the budget for it. Well, now finally, we've got one, and I'm hoping that position will not be vulnerable to being cut if it's a choice between a media resource person and another bus driver. I mean, where can, where can we find the resources?
I really don't have that answer. It's really going to take a lot of, you know, looking at the budget critically. What we're already given by the county commissioners as far as local funding is really good when you compare it to other districts in the state. We're in the top 20 in the state out of maybe 115 districts. So they're doing their part. I don't want to see larger classroom sizes. I don't want to see services taken away, but I don't have the answer as far as unless, you know, the state just decides to give us more money, which I hope they do. I don't have that answer.
Well, certainly, the state assumes a lot of responsibility for the current budget crisis in the schools, right? I mean, when 2005, when I moved to Polk County, North Carolina schools were doing relatively well, and now we're towards the bottom of the list in the country when it comes to, you know, dollars spent per student. So this is a, this is a political question, a partisan political question at the state level that the school board really doesn't have any role in. But you say that the commissioners, the county commissioners have done relatively well, say, top 20. As a result, we're in the top two or three school districts in the state, so that's pretty good. But is there more money available, do you think? I mean, how much, can we raise taxes?
I don't want to see it go there because everybody, you know, all citizens don't want to see their taxes go up, by no means. I don't have the answer, but I think we're going to really have to come together as a board and really think outside the box what we can do to obtain more money so we can still provide the same level of service to all children.
The question of funding is one of those administrative, business-oriented topics that really is the meat of a school board's responsibility. It's not often the sexiest things, and it doesn't attract a lot of attention. It certainly doesn't attract any media attention. For years, hardly anybody would show up to a school board meeting because you guys were stuck in the administrative and budgetary weeds, doing the boring work of trying to make the school board work. And that's all changed a little bit in the last couple of years, I guess, with the arrival of COVID. And at the same time, there was a national effort to politicize school boards. And I think it's inarguable that Polk County schools has been caught up in that. You mentioned putting a priority on communication. Is there a way to let the people of Polk County know that you have to be able to get back to doing the boring budgetary administrative personnel hiring and that kind of thing instead of being distracted by political issues? Is there a way to get a consensus on that?
I think it's just we're going to have to be able to have more dialogue with parents or the community at large, or the county at large, if they have questions, and try to answer those questions. But what I do find is a lot of times at board meetings, you know, there's questions that come to us that really is not a, is not a decision by the board. There's certain things we don't have control over. So I think just better informing the public, you know, what the board has control over. It's not day-to-day operations. Superintendent Aaron Green does that, and he leads, you know, for us, and he's done an excellent job. But I think it's just better informing the public what it is truly that school boards do.
A lot of people started attending these board meetings, and they were probably surprised because it's a public meeting, but really, you only get to interact at the last bit of the meeting just before you go into, into closed session, and you get three minutes to talk, and only 10 people get to talk, and it's one way because the board never reacts. Earlier, you suggested something a bit more interactive?
Possibly. Maybe we could move it, you know, as some suggested. Maybe public comment could become, you know, more at the front end of the meeting. You know, people expressing, if they haven't already reached out to Superintendent Green prior to the meeting, and they sign up and they're on the list, maybe having more interaction on the front end and so that they feel like they're heard and they're important instead of just leaving it the back end and then, I don't know, I still feel like we need to have limitations on the time because, I mean, it could go on and on and on. So I don't see, you know, we could maybe increase it from three minutes to five minutes. But I do feel like we need to have, you know, when people sign up to speak, we need to know where these folks are coming from. You know, are they residents of the county? If so, what is their address? You know, I believe whoever's speaking should, if they don't have children in school, which they don't have to, they should at least be residents of the county. It shouldn't be another state. It shouldn't be another county in North Carolina. You know, I want to hear, you know, real concerns and real concerns that relate to Polk County and what we can do.
Not big national headline stuff from last night's cable news shows.
Right, right.
That has, I think a lot of people have sort of learned that something has to change if the public is going to come around to understanding how you have to relate to the Board, because it's clearly not working now. People making little manifesto statements at the end of the meeting and then going home. You've been on the Board for 24 years. Did it ever occur to you that perhaps you should be the chair and you could maybe play a role in shifting the way things go?
Well, when Mr. Tennant passed away, I was vice chair at that time. I served as vice chair for numerous years. But shortly after he passed away, with my personal work, it was accelerated, and then we hit COVID, and I really had to be working a lot more hours trying to attract and hire employees. So I was out there, you know, beating the bushes, you know, trying to find people. And I just really, at that time, did not want to take on something that I did not feel I could do excellent in. It just wasn't the right timing. I would eventually like to do that, but just at that time, it was just not the right timing for me.
Well, it was an unusual time, that's for sure, yeah.
Right.
The current chair, Mike Ashworth, I think it's fair to say he was kind of like a reluctant leader in a sense that he probably didn't seek that position, but he has embraced it. Do you have confidence that he knows what he's doing?
Yes, I'm very confident in Mike Ashworth. He's done a phenomenal job, and he's really grown. We've all grown during this pandemic times. But no, I have no reservations whatsoever on Mike Ashworth. He does a tremendous job in leading Polk County schools.
All right. Let's switch to a little more tricky issue then. This notion that school boards have come politicized and they have become sounding boards for people with all kinds of grievances, which really aren't anything to do with the curriculum or the teachers or anything else but particular Polk County. We have a new atmosphere that started with the arrival of COVID, and I think it was first, we first saw it with people opposed to masks during the COVID era. And I got to say, it didn't, the school board didn't come across looking great for a while. And there was a meeting in August of last year where you voted six to one to reject the advice of the State Board of Education, the State Health Agency, and the local health folks, and your own superintendent. And then you had to close several schools, you know, three weeks into the school year. So what are your thoughts on what you learned from that experience? And would you maybe do things differently?
You know, we were working at that time in real time, and it was moving so fast. I have to say, I didn't have enough information, looking back. I was just doing it at the time, you know, what I felt was best for students, not putting them in masks. But then, just a few weeks later, just maybe even two weeks later, I thought, oh, no, that's not such a good idea. When I started reading more and, you know, looking at what other school systems were doing and talking to Superintendent Green some more, I mean, we do a lot of collaboration back and forth, talking through things because we might not always have the best judgment call at the time. So, you know, with the mask, I saw it as a tool to keep children in school and have face-to-face instruction, so, and to keep them safe. So looking back, that first vote in that August, you know, I would just say we live and learn, so.
You wouldn't do it the same way, I guess?
No, I don't, I wouldn't go back the same way, not then. But I really don't think it should have been a local board decision to have to make that call. It was really uncomfortable.
There's a lot of agreement on the fact that the state handing that decision of the Board was kind of like passing the buck from the governor's office.
Right. Should have been made at state level.
Yeah. What if, what if certainly allowed you not to have to worry about whom to trust and whom, you know, which advice to follow? But this is a very important issue for me because what I saw was a group of people who aren't experts in a field, because you can't be expected to be experts in epidemiology, but there were experts in the field, and they all said the same thing. And it wasn't just Polk County, but many counties in North Carolina said, no, 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 we don't want the masks. Where did that idea come from, that the masks were, were going to be a unnecessary or detrimental tool?
I, I think it was those, all I can say is those groups out there. There's groups out there that were making that noise. Not saying that's who I listen to, but I think a lot of it was just being polarized to the general public by those groups making the noise. And then I really think a lot of people, they didn't understand then, and I don't think they'll ever understand now, anything about masks and why we ever made children wear them. I mean, I still get criticized for that, but all I can do is say, at this time, we did what we felt was right at the time. Would I go back and do mask? Yes, because if I'm advised by the CDC to do that, and I'm hearing it also other schools in the state doing the same thing, I'm going to do what I feel protects children, and that's what I did.
Well, it was, I don't pretend that it wasn't a difficult decision. I just was surprised that it was six to one, and the only vote in favor of masks no longer sits on the Board.
Right.
So hopefully, we won't have another pandemic to worry about.
Hopefully not.
But we do have to deal with a lot of opposition to books that make people uncomfortable. There is one group out there who uses the word obscene over and over again on their website to talk about books they don't like. And I don't think there's any books in school libraries that are obscene, but clearly, people have different opinions on this. Now, the Board just met last week, and you, was it a second reading? Was that a final reading?
It was a final reading, and we passed a new policy to address how we're going to handle the books and materials in school.
It seems like a relatively straightforward notion. You have to go through the stages. If you're not satisfied, you can escalate it, but eventually, books will be evaluated one by one.
Absolutely.
In the meantime, the rest go back.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yes.
And of course, any parent can object to their own student being taught a particular book if they, if that's the way they feel.
They have that right.
Right. So what is the problem? I don't understand where the, where the animosity and the frustration from certain parents is coming from.
I really, I can't answer that. I don't know why. I feel like with the pandemic, people became very angry and unhappy, and all I can say is I want to move away from that. I try to think positive, and I want to be positive, and I can't say why they do what they do. But I mean, they're entitled to handle, you know, what they want their child to read is totally their call. So at least they have that right.
Have you sensed any trends waning or accelerating in this, this movement, for lack of a better word?
I, it just, to me, seems to sort of be at an even right now. I don't see escalating. I don't see it de-escalating, but it's not going away.
But since the election started, you know, getting in sort of higher intensity the last few weeks, have people talked to you, have come to you to talk about this thing?
Yes, I've had some questions, yes, asking about, you know, books, like how many's been pulled, you know, for review? How many are currently being reviewed? Who's doing the review? And most people feel good that at least we have a policy in place, and when it boils down to it, they know that they can, you know, they have the right for what their child will read. So they feel good, I think, in the policy that we do have now.
And so is this an example of a communication can somewhat deal with this problem? If people just understand that they actually have power to protect their children?
I think it's communication. I think we can do a better job of communication, definitely.
Well, you know, every candidate I've talked to has brought up communication unprompted as something they want to be concerned about. So I think it's safe to say, no, the next Board will probably want to do something about that. One, the ideas that came to my mind was perhaps a quarterly forum or something, or maybe even twice a year, or some forum where parents can show up and not have to sit through an hour and a half or two hours of the administrative stuff, and like you can, you can have a two-way conversation with the Board members.
That's a possibility, but then also I've thought about, you know, you have a Board of seven. You could almost have a member adopt the school and they'll listen to those concerns because, of course, we can't react to those because we're a Board of seven. But at least someone that they know at that school level that sits on the Board that they can communicate with, even though I'm going to have to go back to the superintendent for direction. But still, somebody they feel they know is there for them at that school level that they can reach out to, and then too, they can always show up at a Board meeting as well. But I think if we can just have more communication on the front end instead of just waiting to the meeting.
So it's sort of like a congressman coming back to their district and having a little town hall meeting once every blue moon.
Mm-hmm, possibly.
I know that, I think that would make a lot of people happy because they do identify with their school, they're part of the county. You know, it's, it's a long way from Cooper's Gap to Saluda, for instance, so.
Right.
If, if, in other words, if the school board could come to the community rather than the other way around.
Right. I think something like that, whether, you know, we make sure we show up at PTA meetings if they're having those, or at least I hope, you know, they'll start back, you know, being active PTAs, that would be great. But I just think being more active and seen in the communities would be a plus.
This might create expectations for Board members who aren't paid very much. Your honor, areas insignificant, right? And you've all got part full-time jobs. I mean, how much, how much extra time and energy can you devote to?
I mean, if it was like one time a month in addition to at least, you know, the monthly meeting, and then we may have some other special call meetings, I really don't think that's too much. I mean, I really personally think I could manage that.
Do most school board members, are they relatively passive in that they react to people coming to them with problems, or do they actively seek out the ideas of the community?
I feel like we, we wait on people to come to us.
Well, and again, after your, I would say, the first 22 years you were on the Board, people, things were going in a positive direction.
Yes.
And people, there's no reason to show up at a Board meeting if things are going well.
That's right.
Right.
We might have had one or two, that was it.
Do you anticipate, again, if we, if we put an emphasis on communication, do you think there'll be a new level of expectation on how much access people have?
I feel like that's going to have to be something decided by Superintendent Green. Just how far do we want to go down that road? We want to make sure it's not where we put the Board in a bad position. But again, I want to be more accessible to the public, and I think that's what they're looking for.
Well, certainly, many people have complained about the, I mean, I don't really understand it myself because I've always found the Polk Schools be relatively accessible to my concerns a few times that I've had them. But there are people who seem to feel that there is not easy avenues that they can go and, and have their, their concerns heard.
And really, I don't understand that because Superintendent Green, he's always accessible, always. And his support staff is too. But if they don't have answers, you know, if people ask me, I always say, go to your teacher, your principal, and then if you're not getting the answers you want, go to the superintendent. You know, the Board's the last to be the ones that they come to. If it's a hearing, that's when they come. So we don't really want to be involved in too much because if it's a hearing, we don't want to know a whole lot about it beforehand.
How about just the notion that the perception of an audience at a school board meeting? I know that, I mean, I'm the chair of the Planning Board in Saluda, so I understand how, how things really work in the real world, but the perception is that Aaron Green does a lot of talking, Dave Sherping does a lot of talking, every now and then, the chairman will say something and move on to the next agenda. But the, most of the members of the Board don't actually do a heck of a lot during the meeting, and I think it creates this perception that you're not listening or engaged or paying attention. And again, I know why it is the way it is, but if there was more back and forth, more discussion during the Board meeting that might give the impression that the Board members are a little more engaged and a little more open to the greater public dialogue, is that a fair commentary?
I can see the perception from the public, maybe what you see sitting out there, what they see sitting out there looking in. I don't have the answers other than, you know, it is a Board of seven, and so I can't speak out a whole lot. I can give my viewpoint, which maybe that's what needs to happen, but I can't speak for anybody else on the Board. So most of the time, we come to one unified answer because if it's something we have to vote on later, we want to all be at least on the same page. We're not always on the same page, but sometimes... We're not always on the same page, but sometimes we just have to talk through it, and then when it boils down to it, it's what is best for the students and for the system.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is you're, you're incumbent with the most seniority, right, on, on, on the board, and?
Rick Koval.
Oh, yeah, sorry, Rick. Yeah, he's not running this time, though, so.
That's right.
Among the folks that are running for reelection. And I'm definitely getting a sense from everybody that we do need a change of some kind in the way in which the board, the board's relationship to the broader community.
I think that's just going to take a collaboration amongst us, you know, putting those ideas out there, you know, what we can do better, what we can do different to get better results. I don't have the answers, but I think if I'm on this next board, I think that's a conversation that's going to need to happen. And I feel like if I'm not on the board, it's still going to happen. I think it's everyone agrees that we have to have better communication.
All right. Well, that is a good place to wrap up because there's no doubt, everyone does agree, we need, we need better communication, even if it's just a little bit of window dressing to make it clear that people aren't just, you know, filling time once, once a month.
Right. And it's not the time that we're just filling. You know, I, again, I'm passionate about what I do. I care, and I think, you know, if I have my heart in the right place and I truly care, which I do, then I'm where I need to be.
All right. Well, thanks so much for finding the time.
Okay.
And good luck.
Thank you, James.
Good. That was Sherri Page, the incumbent for Green Creek. This episode is the last in a series of interviews with candidates for the Board of Education. I haven't included everyone running for every seat, and I know some people are probably not happy with my choices. If you want to make a case for another candidate, or you have any other thoughts on what Polk Law should be exploring, send an email to jamesh@polklaw.com. I will read them, and I even will respond. Next week, I'm taking a break from the election by talking with Mark Byington, who is representing Polk County in the negotiations with the railway that owns the Saluda grade. If a deal can be reached, the infamous Rails to Trails project will be one step closer to reality. I think you'll find her talk fascinating, even if you're not a serious cyclist or hiker. Thanks for listening.